All the IT department. Here we go, ladies and gentlemen, six o'clock. Let's call the Tuesday, August 12th, 2025, City Council, Fairbowl to order, and the first item is roll call.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Dumbuia.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Rowan.
Here.
Bunceus.
Teal.
Here.
Mayor Spooner.
Here. And pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item two, approval of the agenda.
So moved, second.
Motion by Ross, second by Dumbuia, to approve the ma- the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion passes. Item number three, presentations and introductions, residents, academy participants, recognition, Jessica Kinder and Brad Finau, Communications Manager.
Mayor, members of the council. Um, you may recall, following the community survey here in late 2024, uh, staff pitched the idea of putting together a residence academy. Um, we were hopeful it was going to be a huge success. Um, but I don't think we ever could have, uh, truly seen the, the, the fruit of it until, uh, recently completing it. Um, we had our last session, uh, two weeks ago, and eight weeks prior to that, we met every Wednesday night, uh, as part of the Residence Academy. Um, and I think it was, uh, a really eye-opening experience for the participants. And I think, uh, staff also learned a lot throughout the process. So, um, for their commitment, uh, and their dedication to learning more about not only the city as a community, uh, but certainly the city as an organization. Uh, we want to take a moment and recognize those who could be with us here tonight. Rather than going with the traditional plaque, uh, Jessica had a great idea to be a bit creative. Uh, and we pitched the idea to the folks at our sign shop, uh, Mike O'Rourke and Todd Glendy, who came up with a really neat baller city of Fairbo street sign, uh, that's perhaps a little bit more fitting. So, um, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll call the individuals forward, forward. Uh, if you would take your sign and, and feel free to move through the line and check, uh, councilmembers and mayors. Jackie Barker. Judy Becker. Jane Egredal.
Good to see you again, congratulations.
Bowie Kuchera. Travis Cath.
Yeah, well done.
Ibrahim Khalif.
Thanks for participating.
Congratulations.
Thanks for participating. Thank you for participating. Thanks for participating.
Thanks for participating.
And members of I've, as I've noted previously, um, the city of Fairbo is extremely appreciative for not only your time and dedication, uh, but your desire to learn more, get more involved with the city. So, out for the city, thank you.
And I would just like to say thank you to Brad. Um, this was something that when we talked about it initially as being one of those very low cost, low hanging fruit things to engage some people in a really more direct intensive way. Um, Brad just took the ball and ran with it. And so, uh, kudos to him. And then thank you to department heads, um, and everybody who participated, uh, in that one night of really showcasing their department and providing some really fun experiences. And so this is the first Residence Academy, and so we hope that they'll help us recruit for our second one.
That was my next point. Thank you to everybody, and we hope you can spend the next, uh, year, nine months, uh, trying to recruit people quickly, just.
Just really quickly, I know I'm on down on the agenda, Judy Becker, I was a person. And staff were, um, without exception.
Help us recruit for next year and tell everybody what a fun time you had. Thank you, Brad. All right. Item number four, approval of the minutes of July 22nd, 2025.
So moved.
Take a motion.
Second.
By Roan, a second by Dumbuia, all those in favor signify.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion passes. Item number five, request to be heard, were there any on the clipboard? Did anybody notice? I don't believe so. Uh, item number six, consent agenda items. Tonight we have six A through six H. Would anybody like to any comments or questions?
Mayor Spooner?
Yes.
I'm, I'm going to abstain from voting from six H.
Mayor Spooner, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items six A through six H.
Second.
Motion by Ross, second by Barnes for six A through six H. All those in favor signify.
Aye.
All opposed. That was public hearings tonight, we have none. Items for discussion, item A, resol- Resolution 2025 dash 191. Approved findings of fact and the record of a decision for Archer Data Centers, EAW, and a negative declaration needing an EIS. Harry Davis will begin this.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Um, tonight we do have a resolution in front of you to find that there is, uh, no need for an EIS for an EAW, uh, and it's associated with the Archer Data Centers project. Um, we do have our consultant here that actually, uh, reviewed this EAW in depth and, and provided this, this feedback to the city to make this negative, uh, negative finding of an EIS. I'd like to turn it over to them if that's okay.
Certainly, thank you.
Good evening, council. My name's Allison Harwood. I am with WSB, and I've been working alongside Harry and other city staff to review the EAW for the Archer Date- Archer Data Center project. Um, over the next few minutes, I'm going to go over the process of an EAW, the purpose of an EAW, and ultimately some of the findings of this EAW to get to, um, staff and, uh, planning commission's recommendation to you. So the first thing I will briefly review with you is some of the relevant terms and acronyms that are used and that I may use through this presentation so that, um, there's no confusion in what I'm talking about because I will tend to use, um, quite a few acronyms. So the first being the EQB, which is the Environmental Quality Board, and they are the, they oversee the state, um, review program. However, implementation is passed down to local government units or other unit, other state units of government. Um, EAWs, which is what we're reviewing today, are environmental assessment worksheets, and these are environmental review documents that are typically completed for individual development projects that have defined concept plans. That type of environmental review differs from a couple, a couple of other types of environmental review documents that the EQB also oversees. One of those being the environmental impact statement, or the EIS. EISs are typically competed, completed again for individual projects um, that have the potential for significant environmental effects. So some examples of types of projects where you might see an EIS completed would be like a sports stadium, um, interstate pipelines, or large mineral mining facilities. And then finally, um, the definition of significant. In this case, it means that it cannot be undone and/or addressed through other formal review or permitting processes. So again, an EAW is a state environmental review document. It's made up of about 20 questions about, um, some basic project analysis. And the purpose of the EAW is, again, to determine whether significant environmental impacts exist, and if an EIS would be needed to further study those impacts. It can also be used to identify mitigation measures for potential more minor impacts, um, inform future permitting, planning, and zoning decisions. Um, it's important to note that the EAW or any state environmental review process, um, they do not approve or deny projects, they are simply planning documents. So state statute outlines when environmental review is required, and that statute, Minnesota Rule 4410, requires environmental review for various types of development and intensities. So they may, there are, um, there are requirements for reviews for residential, um, for mining, for water impacts. Um, in this particular case, the Archer Data Center exceeded subpart 14 of that rule for industrial, commercial, and institutional facilities. In that case, the city is the responsible government unit, and the owner of the document, responsible for ensuring the completeness and the accuracy of the information in that document. Uh, mitigation measures that are outlined or identified in the EAW could be the responsibility of either the developer or of the city, which would be determined at the time of plan review. The EAW process in general is started when an RGU determines that a mandatory EAW is needed through review of the project, um, concept plans, and then that, um, that state statute I mentioned. Once it's determined that an EAW is necessary, the EAW itself is prepared, and the RGU then reviews the EAW to ensure that it's complete. Once it's been ensured that it's complete, it gets distributed out to both, uh, a list of agency contacts as well as the general public for a 30-day comment period. Once that 30-day comment period is complete, the RGU reviews and responds to comment, comments, and then develops a findings of fact document. Finally, the purpose of that is for the, um, to allow the RGU to make a determination on whether or not the project would require an EIS. As I mentioned, there are about 20 or so different questions in the EAW. They cover a variety of resource topics. Um, they cover potential for impacts to things like cover types, um, grading, water resources, habitat, as well as, uh, public infrastructure such as water and sewer and transportation networks. Um, there might be, there may be a variety of studies or reviews completed along with the EAW, such as a traffic study. Um, but there also may be the need for future or additional studies that would be needed to be completed after the EAW process is done, um, during plan review when more detailed, um, design plans are available to both the city and the applicant. So for some project background, the Archer Data Center, um, sits on approximately 84 acres, and the proposal is for up to 500,000 square feet of data center buildings. That would include up to six one-story buildings, parking lots, utilities such as water main, sanitary, electrical, stormwater management ponds, a substation, and landscape improvements. And the, the construction schedule is anticipated to go from about 2020, fall of 2025 through 2028. Um, over the next few slides, I'm going to go through a few of the, um, resource areas that the EAW evaluated, what the potential impacts were from those, and then if there are any, um, additional studies or permits that would need to be, uh, uh, need to be completed throughout, uh, additional review processes. I'm not going to go through every single one of those resource areas on that previous slide. Um, all of that information is in the, in the EAW that you guys have. I'm going to focus on primarily the resource areas that, um, the city received comments on. So this first one here are just the general cover types of the area. As you can see, the proposed development will primarily impact cropland, um, and the impacts related to the other cover types such as wetlands and woodlands, and the increase in impervious surface would be regulated by multiple government agencies. The water resources, um, category covers a variety of water resource topics, including wastewater, water usage, stormwater, and wetlands. Um, for both wastewater and, uh, water use or water demand, um, more information will be needed, uh, for the city to review on both of those once, um, the cooling system that, the cooling technology that the data center would use is determined. Um, if wastewater is discharged, then additional water quality and quantity data would be needed to, would be provided um, to ensure that there's no adverse impact. And similarly with the water demand, that demand will ultimately depend on the cooling technology used, but the project is anticipated to use city water services. The increase in impervious surface from the buildings themselves and the parking lots, uh, would require stormwater management, both per city and state requirements, and then impacts to any of the wetlands on site would be permitted and mitigated through both state and federal, uh, rules. Potential impacts to wildlife on the site, um, are going to be minimized to the extent feasible, and if needed, the applicant would coordinate with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service as well as the DNR to, um, further address or identify those potential impacts. And any of the areas that are disturbed and, um, are revegetated, there would be an effort to use the, uh, native and non-invasive species to revegetate those disturbed areas. Air quality is one category or one resource area where there will be some additional study completed. Um, an air quality analysis will be completed during final design, and, um, if needed, the applicant will receive or will apply for permits, um, through the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. And if necessary, um, there are some of those environmental review thresholds that are specific to, um, emissions. And if the air analysis, um, shows that the project would exceed those emissions, there would be additional environmental review necessary, and the MPCA would lead that review. Uh, noise may be generated by a variety of, um, project, uh, project elements such as construction, traffic, backup generators, and ventilation systems. This is another resource area where there will be some additional noise study that would can be completed during final design when the applicant has more details on, um, the, um, the design elements that they'll be using. And noise attenuation measures will then be designed to ensure that both state and city noise standards are met. A traffic study was commi- was completed with the EAW, um, and various traffic control measures were outlined to mitigate for impacts to the traffic net- network, um, as a result of traffic generated by the project. And obviously, the project will have quite a bit of grading, approximately 93,000 cubic yards of earthwork, which will require an NPDE, NPDES permit from the MPCA. Um, and then erosion control best management practices will also be used throughout construction to minimize the potential for impacts from erosion. So the EAW itself was determined to be complete on May 14th. Um, it was issued and available for public comment between May 20th and June 20th. There were comments received from two government agencies, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency and the DNR, Department of Natural Resources, and nine members of the public. The comments that were received, um, focused generally on water resources, wildlife and habitat, air quality and noise, which were the categories that we just kind of over, gave an overview to previously. Um, the EAS need decision, um, was extended, uh, through August 20th to give the city staff and the applicant sufficient time to, uh, fully address comments. So there will be several future reviews and approvals needed. Obviously, review and approval by the city itself, as well as through various agencies, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, Department of Natural Resources, Department of Health, um, and Rice County, both the Soil and Water Conservation District as well as their Transportation Department. And the coordination of those permits and approvals will ensure that impacts are, uh, minimized and mitigated appropriately. So through the EAW process, um, and city staff review, it was determined that the information in the EAW and in the response to comments are adequate to determine potential for impacts. That cumulative impacts can be anticipated and controlled, that the governmental reviews and approvals will ensure the project is designed to minimize impacts, that the impacts that have been identified can be anticipated and controlled, excuse me, based on the environmental review and experience on similar projects, and ultimately that significant environmental impacts are not expected, and an EIS is not needed for this project. Happy to answer any questions that council has.
Questions for staff or the council? Yes, Maddie.
Mind me of your name, please.
Allison Harwood.
Harwood, um, you had said there was no significant, um, environmental impacts that will be, that were found, but yet I'm hearing that we don't know the details as far as the air quality of your air effect, um, noise effect, miscellaneous other effects, because we don't have the exact plan of what that would look like. So is this, I guess, the summary of what you had just said? It's just purely based on soil and water only with what we know?
Um, I mean, not necessarily soil and water only. I would say that it's based on, um, the best available information that the city and the applicant have for the level of design that the applicant has at this time in their design process. And again, significant in this context means that, you know, it can't be undone and/or it can't be addressed through other formal review or permitting processes. So those studies that I mentioned, the noise study and the air analysis, um, those are other formal processes that need to be carried out, and there may be other, um, impacts or mitigation measures or permits um, that would be identified through those processes that would then be incorporated into the project, or the project may be modified.
All right, at this point in time, can I just get a gauge of how many people are here that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing that there's only two of you, and I'm going to allow you just a limited amount of time. We, uh, we technically don't have to open a public hearing, but I feel it'd be right to hear from the public. Uh, I would like to hear what you have to say. If you are just simply repeating, uh, what the other person has said, uh, please stick to a timeframe here. We have a very healthy agenda tonight. Please come forward, state your name and your address, and I'm going to allow you about three minutes.
And my address is 68 Fourth Avenue, Southwest.
Go ahead.
My concern is about how fast we are raising the speed of AI without any regulations being put on it yet, and without knowing what the real consequences could be. I keep hearing that it's inevitable, this, uh, trajectory, but I don't think it really is, because I do think we have a choice. I think we have a choice to slow down anyway. Um, I'm not against all AI. I've seen it used, uh, in good ways in the school systems that I work in and, um, in medical situations. Like I said, I, I just think we need to slow down. But I'm hearing a lot about, uh, the negative and darker uses, and I would even say frivolous, when I consider the environmental impacts. So, and I know that, um, they've found that there aren't going to be many, but I disagree with that. Um, because I think that we have valuable and fragile habitats being destroyed across the country, really, to feed AI. Um, and then another argument about this particular place is that it's just an old farmstead with just a small amount of wetland and woods. But I work with pollinators, and we are losing them due to habitat loss and, um, and just, and that's just inch by inch by inch by inch that we're losing it. So it's not much, but everything is adding up. And those, um, pollinators pollinate our food, and I think, um, are, are crucial to our, uh, environmental system, our whole, our survival. Um, and so even replanting with natives is never the same again, even if you work with an expert, and I don't know if they're willing to do that. And if you put in, this, this is just one example. Um, if you put in a grass, uh, lawn, you're going to have to spray, are, are they willing to not spray that? And that's, like I said, just one example. Um, and then one, our, our, more argument I've heard is it's not as bad as the worst thing out there. Um, and I've heard that, uh, several times, I won't name the, the entity that they're talking about, but that I don't think is a very good argument, that it's not as bad as the worst. Um, we're talking about electrical use, water use, noise, light, and air pollution, and, um, it loo- it sounds like these things have been thought out, but is there a promise in there? And that's kind of what you were getting at, too, that, uh, there's nothing that's been decided yet. So I don't know how decisions can be made without knowing the final details of what's going to happen. So, so, and, and then everything said i- i- if it's feasible. So that, again, that doesn't, that doesn't mean it's going to happen. So I just think everything needs to be looked at more thoroughly, uh, environmentally, and, um, and thought through, and just slow down. Thank you.
Soto Spring, 16922 Cabot Avenue. I'm four miles from the location of the proposed data center. Trying not to repeat, I'm going to mention that I heard that the, uh, I believe it was Nashville, drove the data center people out, and they came to Faribault where they would be more welcome. I'm kind of with the people of Nashville on that. I will just briefly echo that I agree that, uh, the need for AI is much less than we think it is. And every couple of times a week, I read a piece of research about what's wrong with AI, and the recent one comes from MIT and a few other places about the effects on cognitive development. And the three researchers involved did not conclude that there should be no AI. They concluded that there were problems, and that AI should be used in a particular way. I can obviously answer more questions about that. But I'm not in favor of thinking that AI is something that is going to happen. There has to be lots of it. So we might as well sacrifice our wells, our environment, our air. I will say about air, I specifically moved to the country for my health. As particularly to do with, um, with air quality and water quality. I'm worried, I don't think I'm close enough to have my well damaged, but I think that the question of wells and the question of wastewater discharge should be seriously considered. And so I would urge you not to go forward too rapidly, but to get those studies done first, and not let Archer go ahead and do its design plans, and then be in the position of saying, "Well, but we put all this work into it, so you have to say yes." And I think I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it, we'll bring it back here to the council. Questions, more questions?
I just have a comment. Um, I noticed that in the agenda notes, there was a comment or a quote made that, um, environmental, let's see. Both the environmental and the planning commission unanimously recommend approval of the resolution, um, that we're discussing. And I just wanted to kind of give my kudos to the environmental commission. They actually did a lot of good research, and I appreciated reading, um, their questions. And from what I was reading, it sounded like majority of them did not want the, but I understand what the quote means. That means you're in support of this specific agenda, so I just wanted to put a voice to that.
Mayor Spooner? Um, so I guess my questions are probably directed towards Jessica. Um, we're basically approving the receipt of the EAW.
Right? Yeah, I was going to say, I'm going to direct your questions more to Harry.
Okay, here, okay. Okay, Mr. Davis. We're basically approving the, you know, the receipt of the EAW and its findings. Um, like you, or, I believe, uh, she said earlier, you know, there's still lots of other testings that could, um, kind of set, send this project off on a side rail somewhere, including, you know, the, uh, noise and the air quality. Is that correct? Sure, sure.
Yeah, so, so the decision today is whether or not the project requires an environmental impact statement based on that kind of definition of significance that I had mentioned. And so this would be, um, the, the recommendation is that it does not require an EIS. Again, there are several other types of reviews, um, both, I mean, city through state through federal agencies that would need to be. federal agencies that would need to be, that would need to occur before the project would ever be approved. And in fact, per state statute, this environmental review process needs to be completed before any governmental approvals can even occur. So that is one reason why these studies happen early on in the process, before there are final designs, because those final, even preliminary designs can't be approved until these types of environmental studies are done, because it gives the governments the ability to see even from, you know, a high level what the potential impacts could be. So they have that knowledge going into those design reviews.
Thank you. With that, I guess I'll just state that I see no reason to accept the EAW and not require the, is it an EIS? Or, yeah, EIS. To me, it seems like we've given them a hurdle that, that they had to jump over, and they did that. And it just seems to me that if we were to put another hurdle in front of them that's not necessary, it seems like we'd kind of be the big bad government that's just putting another roadblock in a business's path. So I don't see any reason to not forward with this.
At this point in time, they entertain a motion on this.
Mayor Spooner.
Just so you know, you're voting in favor of the resolution in front of you, which is actually negative toward requiring the environmental impact statement. Weird as that sounds, you're voting in favor of a law that's negative. Director Riggs?
That's correct.
With that said, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-191, approve findings of fact and record of decision for Archer Data Center's EAW and negative declaration needing an EIS. Second.
Motion by Ross, second by Don Buia. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed. That motion passes. On to the next item. Item B. Hoffmeister South, Hoffmeister, south of Frederickson Drive, comprehensive plan amendment, zoning map amendment, preliminary and final plot. There's about three items here on this, correct? Harry Davis, city planner, once again.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, so the items in front of you, comprehensive plan amendment, zoning map amendment, preliminary plot, and final plot associated with a development called Hoffmeister Fourth Edition. That's the project in front of us today, submitted by Steve Underdahl on behalf of Ann Hoffmeister. The general location for this is near the airport. It's very, very much close to Park Village, and it's just northwest of the Harley-Davidson dealership. Here's the project outlined in yellow, so it's this kind of this weird triangle shape. And then here's the zoning map. So we can see that the, the triangle shape right now is zone completely C2. There's some R3 in the neighborhood that's just to the west. There's a little bit of industrial I1 just to the north, but then everything else towards the east is all C2 oriented more towards being right next to the interstate. So the three main questions in front of you tonight, so the first one is a comprehensive plan, and it's to change part of this triangle lot, the western portion, from commercial to commercial residential mixed use. Rezoning would be to change that same area where land use map designation changes is occurring. That same area would go from C2 to R3. And then the plat would be to actually divide this triangle-shaped lot into three resulting parcels. So here's a diagram in front of you showing just, you know, the orange area would be this commercial residential mixed use. It'd also be zoned R3. And then the red portion would remain C2 and commercial per the comprehensive plan designation. And then here's just removing those overlays, what the three lot layouts would look like. So Lot 1, which would be next to the neighborhood, that's adjacent just to the west. The intent for that property is to be a single-family home for the property owner. They would retain the tree line that's along that western edge. That's their intent. They are also dealing with some very restrictive impervious surface requirements based off of the overall Hoffmeister addition plat, which includes a lot more than just this triangle property. So they are very deliberately and cautiously planning only a small amount of impact to the property with their resulting development. Lot 2, which is next to Lot 1, would end up, in the future, it's intended to be a storage building associated with that Harley-Davidson dealership, essentially overflow for that business. So in terms of the requests in front of you, the comprehensive plan, we do support that change from commercial to commercial residential mixed use. It would be a little bit more in tune with the residences that are just to the west and allow some sort of transition to the commercial elsewhere. The rezoning itself, R3, is compatible with other properties that are zoned R3 just to the west. It's compatible with those residential uses that are on those properties as well. And it can, in this situation, potentially be sort of a spacer element between commercial, future commercial on these properties and the adjacent residential neighborhood. The plats do meet our criteria for approval. We're not recommending any parkland dedication, as that's been satisfied with previous additions of this plat. So it does meet our zoning and subdivision requirements, and so we're recommending that you approve the resolutions and the ordinance, the ordinance in front of you, 2025-193, ordinance 2025-9, and resolution 2025. I'm happy to take any questions.
All right. Any questions on all three of those items?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to, just to clarify, is the owner of the property planning on putting a home on this triangle lot, or are they planning on developing it? Or do you even know?
Yeah, so kind of what I was talking about earlier, so Lot 1, which is that western portion, and if you look at the screen, it's the, it's the orange part of that. That is intended to be the single-family home for the current property owner.
And no other, I mean, they're not going to develop lots like is just on the west side of the trees?
Yeah, they-
I mean, that's not their intent, anyway.
Yeah, they, they want to develop more on the eastern side of that western lot. They don't really want to impact the trees. We'll potentially have some conversations with them about some of the existing trees that are down, just to try to preserve that barrier, but we will, we will try our best with that. But it's intended, per the property owner, that Lot 1 be their single-family home.
And then this really, excuse me, this really, it wouldn't be a city issue. I mean, we come into play on it. But if I remember correctly, there's a, a lot of underground utility lines that run through, I believe it'd be Lot 2. And I would assume if she, or the owner is planning on building a house on Lot 1, I would assume she'd be aware of that. Take that into consideration.
Yes, yes, sir. So as of right now, based off of the title work and the work that the surveyor for the property has done, none of the lots within the, within the triangle area, those are all free of some of the really encumbering easements that you would find just to the south and southeast and to the east of the triangle property. So you can kind of see, I'm not sure if it's still on your screen, but there's kind of this no man's land in between the Harley-Davidson dealership and this triangle lot. That's where the significant easements are.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I thought they went through about there.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor. I don't see any problem with this.
Anyone else? All right, at this time, we're going to go through them.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-193.
Motion by Teal, second by Barnes on Resolution 2025-193, approval of the comprehensive plan amendment to guide certain property on the south side of Frederickson Drive to commercial slash residential mixed use. The five are saying aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion passes. Next one is our ordinance.
Mayor Spooner. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-9.
I'll second.
Motion by Ross, second by Roan on ordinance 2025-9, approval of rezoning of the property on the south side of Frederickson Drive to R3, and this is a roll call.
Councilmember Barnes? Don Buia? Ross? Rowan?
Aye.
Teal?
Aye.
Mayor Spooner?
Aye.
That motion is passed. On the last one, the final resolution.
Mayor Spooner. Make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-194.
By Teal, second by Barnes on Resolution 2025-194, approved.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Thank you. Next item, Rice County, 128 Third Street Northwest, comprehensive plan amendment, zoning amendments, preliminary and final plat. Once again, same issue. Harry Davis, here we go.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this project is similar in terms of the processes that are involved, but a very different location. So Rice County has submitted a plat and some changes to our comprehensive plan and our zoning map for the big block that they own just north of the enforcement center downtown. So it's submitted by Sarah Fullstead on behalf of Rice County. So here it is, just, you know, a little bit north of us, right here is City Hall. Here are all the properties involved, sort of outlined in yellow. And then here's what our zoning map looks like in terms of the existing zoning on the property. So most of the property is currently zoned PI for public institutional. That's more of a reaction to the fact that Rice County owns pretty much all of the land. The two parcels to the southeast are zoned central business district. So that's our downtown zoning district. The request from Rice County, the first one is the comprehensive plan. They would, would like to re-designate the property from institutional, which it currently is, to downtown. And this is more in line with the fact that they would, would intend to sell off bits and pieces of the resulting block that they are view-oriented or sort of re-changing the property lines. Some of those properties are intended for a potential future commercial use. So they would like to be able to facilitate that as a part of this process. The rezoning would be on those same properties that are changing to the downtown designation per our comprehensive plan. They'd also like to make those our central business district, zoning district. So that would be, you know, a little bit more in tune with a lot of the other development that we would find nearby. It's a lot closer, you know, buildings closer to the sidewalk and what have you, a bit of more urban feel to development that happens within the central business district. Then the plat itself would be to reconfigure the existing 12 lots that make up that entire block into just five. So just to help show exactly what's going to change, so the blue area in this diagram is what is intended to be institutional for the comprehensive plan and remain zoned PI for public institutional. The areas that are pink would be shifting over to this downtown land use designation per our comprehensive plan, and then would also change in terms of zoning districts, so central business district. The lot layout itself, it's, it's a little wacky, and there, there's some reasoning behind it, I do promise. So Lot 1 is to the northwest, and so that is intended to be one of the future commercial lots. To the northeast is intended to be a future parking lot that would be downtown. Three would remain associated with the enforcement center and sheriff's office. Four would actually end up being associated with the Friendship House. They're doing some additional development in that area, and they just need a little bit of room. And then five would actually continue to be the Soil and Water Conservation District Office. So four and five would be downtown, as well as Lot 1. Lots 2 and 3 would be institutional and remain institutional. So in terms of going through our processes and meeting our criteria and findings, so the comprehensive plan does, does support this. The intended future uses of these properties are going to change slightly, so it should follow the intended future use, some commercial, some office, depending on where you are in either corner. The rezoning, central business district is very compatible with both this location, the adjacent uses, and PI, the remaining PI that we're maintaining. Now for the plats, they do meet our criteria and our standards for approval. So generally, we are recommending that, this is meeting our zoning and subdivision requirements, so we do recommend that you approve the resolutions and ordinance that are attached to this project. Resolution 2025-195, ordinance 2025-10, and then resolution 2025-195.
All right. Any questions for staff on these three items?
The Riggs, do I have to recuse myself from this? Because that's my employer?
No, you should be fine.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Harry. We will roll through these, just like we did on the last one. I'm going to go ahead.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2025.
Motion by Don Buia, second by Barnes to approve Resolution 2025-195, property at the corner of Fourth Street Northwest. The five are saying aye. All opposed. Motion passes. On to the ordinance.
Mayor Spooner. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-10. Second.
Motion by Ross, second by Barnes on ordinance 2025-10, approval of the rezoning of the property on the corner of Fourth Street Northwest, Second Avenue Northwest to Central Business District, and this is a roll call.
Councilmember Barnes?
Aye.
Don Buia?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Rowan?
Aye.
Teal?
Aye.
Mayor Spooner?
Aye.
Motion passes. On to last resolution.
Approve Resolution 2025-196.
I'll second.
Motion by Barnes, second by Roan to approve Resolution 2025-196. Preliminary and final plots for Henry M. Rice Square. All opposed. That passes. On to item D, Resolution 2025-195. Once again, Harry Davis.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So the resolution in front of you is for an interim use permit. It is submitted by Michelle Keller on behalf of Ben Estep as the owner from Van East Land Development Company. The location, it's 1512 30th Street Northwest. So it's up here in our, in our industrial park on the, on the north side. Here's the property that's outlined in this cyan blue color. The interim use permit focus area is going to be more on this, on the north side of this property, sort of adjacent to their driveway along Industrial Drive. The request by the applicant is to allow up to six storage containers to remain at that property for no greater than two years. The property currently does actually have these storage containers. They've, in a way, they've, they've actually been there through a previous interim use permit from 2020. But what the applicant is trying to do is they're actually shifting their business in this particular building from, from sort of one, one part of their overall business plan to a completely different part of their, of their business. And so there's a lot of equipment that is shifting in between these two parts of the business. And so they've really needed these storage containers for a while in order to help manage some of that inventory. They are going through the process right now of applying for one of the recent business uses that are being approved by the state, particularly a cannabis-based, cannabis-based business. And so they intend to continue using these storage containers to help make sure that their additional inventory, that they have time to manage it, get rid of it, and to- their additional inventory, that they have time to manage it, get rid of it, and to process it out. They would, they would like these storage containers to remain on site in this sort of focus area, up to six, so no more than six. We do have some conditions in there, just kind of getting into the discussion, you know, we do have some conditions in there that the area around these storage containers be kept clean, that there are no equipment or materials that are outside of these containers, which is currently an issue with their, with their current setup. And so part of this interim use permit would be to rectify that situation. Generally, from a comprehensive plan point of view, you know, utilizing this property within a very reasonable means, that's definitely covered and this is a very reasonable situation so that they can kind of get started and to have a place to, to store all this equipment. And then from the zoning side of things, a interim use permit, it's a very reasonable thing to ask for. In this case, they're asking for no more than two years. It's very similar to a previous interim use permit that we granted them back in 2020. It does meet our criteria within the UDO for approval. So we are recommending that you approve this Resolution 2025-195.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
So they got a permit in 2020 for a term permit. Five, six years, and now we're going to give them another one? Would not be in favor of this.
I, I do, I believe I remember this when we approved it. Rowan said, you know, they did get the shorter five-year approval, but I don't see any reason to not give them another two years if they're trying to build up or change their business and they simply need storage for some equipment and stuff. I, I see no problem with that.
Been waiting a while for the state to make a decision.
I agree, you have it in favor.
Yeah, but aren't we concerned that?
This is right.
You're going to keep extending it? Am I wrong?
This is right in the heart of the industrial park and I don't think, right across the street there's 25 bucks.
Then why? I just don't understand why I have a, a process for a temporary.
Well, I think that's part of the city code that you just can't take that. A lot of times what we do is we.
Yeah, I appreciate the proactivity too, to come in and ask for a permit.
Hey, any other questions for staff? At this point in time, I will adjourn.
Spooner?
Yes?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-197.
Motion by Barnes, a second by Dambouya to approve Resolution 2025-197. Interim use permit to allow storage containers at 1512 30th Street Northwest.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. On to Item E, once again, Harry Davis.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is the last you'll see of me, I promise. So this is Ordinance 2025-11. So previously, we had, we had discussed with a previous project that staff should go back with the Planning Commission to take a look at some of our accessory structural requirements and potentially move forward with some recommended amendments to this ordinance that would allow this previous project that Council had approved through variances as more of a by right situation. It was a large lot, but it was a very fairly large accessory structure. And so with Planning Commission, as well as a number of other parts of, of city, city staff, I sat down to kind of work with everyone and to identify some, some areas that we are suggesting changes. Some of these changes are going to be more focused on issues that I personally have had issues trying to figure out how to administer, either it's strange wording or inconsistent wording. In other situations, staff has run into code enforcement issues that have really brought to light, hey, we need to change something, otherwise we will never be able to deal with some of these code enforcement issues that keep popping up. And then, you know, of course, dealing with, you know, trying to allow larger accessory structures, especially on larger properties. So in terms of changes, I will not go through all of them unless you'd like me to go through all of them. You know, generally clarifying things, trying to figure out, hey, you know, are there areas where we can be a little bit more flexible with our code in order to allow certain situations, you know, just a little bit of variation, putting a little bit more trust into staff to, to figure out, okay, what are some of these situations? Giving staff a little bit of, I guess, leeway in terms of being able to apply the code in different situations. Clarifying a few things, especially when it comes to permits for garages, which I know has been somewhat of a, of a, of a, of a topic that's been gone through quite a bit in the past with, with past city council, the council makeups. But, you know, in, in terms of moving forward, trying to help with people's ability to remove their garage in the case that they have a dilapidated garage, that's a safety issue. But then as soon as they're improving their house to a certain point, then making sure that they are bringing that garage down. We have a number of code enforcement issues that are essentially, we're requiring from the planning and zoning side of it, that they have a garage, but code enforcement is requiring that they take that garage down. And if you guys have seen anything with construction prices, a garage is easily 60 grand. So it's really hard to tell people that they have to spend 60 grand all of a sudden after removing their garage. So just, you know, a few other things, you know, here's what we are proposing for the detached accessory structures for most of residential properties within city limits. An increase in the number of structures allowed, an increase in the amount of square footage allowed, and that be cumulative across all accessory structures, not just, you know, your first structure is X amount of square footage and your second is an X, you know, X amount, this is just for all accessory structures. We did remove the sidewall height requirement. Building height typically deals with that anyway, and so we didn't feel like it was adding a whole lot of value, and it was really significantly restricting property owners from being able to make improvements to the property that made sense. The, I guess, in terms of Council's ask of both city staff and Planning Commission, this is kind of the main event. So this is a accessory structure allowances for large, single-family lots. So we're talking like, you know, two acres for one sort of tier and then five acres or more in a next tier. And so that, at that point, we're allowing more structures, we're allowing larger size structures cumulatively. But we're also requiring some additional setbacks to make sure that we're not all of a sudden putting a 4,000 square foot building right on somebody's property line. So, you know, trying to balance things in order to make it fair for adjacent property owners, even though, you know, we are trying to liberalize a lot of this code section. So from a comprehensive plan standpoint, you know, looking at this and trying to find a, a, a good balance between community interests and property owner rights, we do feel like that we've, we've achieved that or at least, you know, striven very hard to achieve that. And from the zoning standpoint, this removes a lot of barriers or minimizes them for a lot of properties within Farbo and provides some appropriate limits on being able to make investments in people's properties. So summary, we do feel like that this meets the criteria for zoning text amendment as well as comprehensive plan criteria. So we are recommending that you approve the first reading of Ordinance 2025-11.
All right, any questions for staff?
Thank you, Mayor. So Mr. Davis, in the last few months, we've approved a couple of different variances, I believe it was, one was for a large garage, basically, that didn't have any residential living in it. And then we've approved a accessory dwelling unit that was specifically for residential use. Is this kind of combining the two of them?
So Councilmember Ross, so ADUs or accessory dwelling units are, at the moment, governed by a completely different section of code, and so those are actually pretty limited. So this would not, this, I believe, would work well with our current code, but I think in, in the future, in the, the intent to deal with housing across Farbo and to, and to better address that within our zoning ordinance, this would integrate better. But currently, ADUs are kind of dealt with in a, in a completely different section.
Okay, so, because I'm looking at your little chart and when, and so when it says one or two family residential use, that's not the new structure, that's the existing struc-.
Yes.
Structure.
Yeah, so that could be.
Kind of classifying the lot as to what they can do.
Yeah, correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think with city council, our goal is to make, remove barriers for homeowners, and this is a great step. And I'm very pleased with how quickly this came up after we've been discussing that. So thank you for your work on that. I think it's, agrees with our housing and our comprehensive plan.
Or, a motion to approve Ordinance 2025-11.
Second.
I have a motion by Teal, second by Barnes to approve Ordinance 2025-11. Approved the zoning text amendments to accessory structure requirements.
Councilmember Barnes?
Aye.
Dambouya? Ross?
Aye.
Rowan?
Aye.
Teal?
Aye.
Mayor Spooner?
Aye. That motion is passed. On to our final resolution of the evening. Resolution 2025-195.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On June 10th, the Council approved a resolution that approved a purchase and development agreement for the city-owned property south of the Viaduct, and it really was intended for the second phase of the Riverchase Apartments. That resolution gave us some flexibility to make some minor changes to the development, the purchase and development agreement, but if there were any significant changes, the expectation was to bring it back to the city council. In this case, when we first passed that on June 10th, the idea was, both parties wanted to close on this property this year and see construction happen this year. That's not going to be possible, so the developer has asked for the closing date to change to April 1st of next year. So that's a significant change that we wanted to bring back to you, is that the closing date would move no later than April 1st, 2026. Could happen before then, but no later than April 1st, 2026, with the expectation that development would begin in April. The second thing is during the first phase of the Riverchase, the apartment that's up there right now, there was some soil corrections that needed to be done. There was an economic development TIF for that. The city did approve some changes to that economic development TIF to be able to account for the additional soils work. And the intent with this agreement that before you is that Riverchase 2 would also involve an economic development TIF, and should they encounter some soils similar to like what they did with the first one, that we would negotiate together, the parties would negotiate together to make changes to that TIF to account for the soil correction. So those are the two major changes in the development agreement and purchase agreement. There's some other minor ones, but those are the two that we really wanted to bring forward. Happy to answer any questions, and I know the developer is here as tonight, tonight as well.
I do have a minor one, and this might be headed towards administration. We had talked about this closing in this year, the fiscal year. Happy with this?
Earlier on the consent agenda was a budget amendment for 2025 for Fund 437, which is our public facilities fund where this would go, and I removed this as revenue for 2025. And so what you'll see next week is revenue coming in in 2026. That fund did end in a negative position for 2024, and so ultimately, it just means that fund's not getting interest, but we do see the revenue coming at a, a certain point. So we can talk more about that through the budget process and that impact.
All right, this time I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Spooner, I make a motion to approve 2025, Resolution 2025-195.
Second.
I have a motion by Dambouya, second by Ross to approve. Development agreement on the property described as Lot 1, Lot 2, Riverchase addition.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Any, no board, no bids? Boards, commission reports, announcements.
So Paradise Theater of the Arts, they have their Last Holy Smoke event at the Christ Lutheran Church this Wednesday from 5:00 to 8:30. Proceeds go to three different nonprofits, including Paradise Theater. Also, they have, there's a new gallery opening, reception this Friday, August 15th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. And last but not least, Paradise is hosting Music Trivia, kicks off coming Thursday, August 21st.
Administration?
Yeah, I have a few things. August is turning into a very busy month. Tomorrow, we will do our council chat from noon to 1:00 in Central Park. Again, not a nighttime thing, but we're also trying to vary things up, and so we'll, we'll be in Central Park. No topic, just come and chat, ask any questions, and we'll go from there. The joint boards meeting is on Friday at 11:00 AM at Buckham West. I have two that have said they'd be there, and so I don't know, okay, three? Okay, okay. So we'll RSVP on, on your behalf. And then a reminder, on Monday, the 18th, at 6:00 PM at Buckham West, we'll have an HRA, EDA, city council joint work session as well. Buckham West.
Oh, Buckham, good.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion by Barnes, second by Dambouya to adjourn, but all those in favor say.
Aye.
All opposed. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming.